Good evening and welcome to the May 14, 2018 meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. First, in accordance with open meeting law, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone else in the audience recording the meeting. Your name, please?
Alan Rafferty.
And what type of recording are you making?
What type of recording, what do you mean?
Is it an audio or a video?
Audio and video.
Audio and video, thank you. Mr. Alan Rafferty is making an audio and video recording. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first item we have on the agenda is public comment, and the first one we have signed up as Ellen Gabry, who wants to talk about the town seal. Ms. Gabry?
Good evening, Board of Selectmen, Acting Town Manager, audience. My name is Ellen Gabry. I'm the retired town clerk in Auburn, and I worked in the town clerk's office for 21 years. I served as the town clerk for 13 of those years and was president of the Worcester County City and Town Clerks Association for two years. I received my Certified Massachusetts Municipal Clerk designation after taking classes and passing an exam. Now, the town seal is used to identify official town documents and materials such as signs, labels, town vehicles, social media, and anything supporting town business. The seal is used so that the public knows that these documents are official town information and sets them apart from unofficial materials. I received in the mail last week, a campaign mailing for a candidate that had the official town seal on it. The inference is that the candidate's mailing is an official document of the town of Auburn. A political mailing by a candidate sent to influence voters in no way is an official town document. This is a violation of the State of Massachusetts law, Mass. General Law, 268, Section 35. Section 35 is unauthorized use of the town seal. With the Board of Selectmen and the Acting Town Manager, please make your position clear on the use of the official seal in support or non-support of any candidate by the town of Auburn. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gabry. Mr. Page also wants to speak regarding the town seal.
Good evening, members of the Board of Selectmen. I am Wayne Page, and I am a candidate for the Board of Selectmen. There have been rumors going around town about a campaign mailer I sent out last week. I thought I would come here tonight to clear the air. This mailer had an image of the town seal in one corner. The seal was included as a point of pride of my community. I also had the mailer printed in red, white, and blue for the same reason. Hopefully, I will not be accused of disrespecting the American flag. I received a call from the Town Council Friday advising that there was a state statute which prohibited the reproduction of town seal. He advised that I cease using the town seal in my campaign literature, and I have done so. To be in violation of this statute, a person must act, quote, "with the intent to assume an official character which he does not possess," unquote. Viewing the seal in the full contents of this mailer, I displayed no such intent. My campaign mailer did not list endorsements, had my name and address at the bottom, and did not purport to be mailed on behalf of town government. I have consulted an attorney who has researched this law, and he advised me that I was not in violation of this statute since I did not have the required intent to assume an official character. I have also been advised that someone is circulating false and deformatory statements that I can be fined $50 for each piece of campaign literature bearing the town seal. An attorney told me this is completely and total false. The statement says, "Anyone who ceases to reprint a production of the seal can be fined no more than $50." An attorney stressed the language, "cease to be printed," and "no more than $50," as specified one case of action or one act of causing to be printed a town seal. A lawyer researched a state statue in the Massachusetts Webland, which is a database for state statues, case law decisions, and administration ruling. He cannot find much case law showing anyone had been charged under this statue. This appears to be one of those really enforced statues that we only hear of when someone challenges the political establishment. I am also concerned, Town Council involvement. This matter should have been turned over to the Office of Campaign and Political Finances, which would have provided the same service for free. The only other thing I would have to say, as I did have a discussion with Ms. Robert Henigan, the law firm for the town, we had a very good conversation about the issue. We have came to a conclusion. There is a letter. I don't have it with me tonight, and I don't have enough time to read it because my three men are probably just about up. But I had a great conversation. We work things out between us, and that's too bad because that's the way it should be. Thank you for letting me speak.
Mr. Alan Rafferty wants to speak about 18 Paul Street.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman. I'd like to say, I think it's fantastic. It's 2018, and the Board of Selectmen room finally has air conditioning. Thank you. I want to inform the public about a few stories concerning the use of city logos or seals. Yes, the use of town seals is prohibited under state law, but it is a law that is rarely enforced. There is the concept of fair use, which allows people to use copyrighted material. If you are not profiting from the use or using it in a demeaning way, you are allowed to use it under federal law. In a Worcester Telegram and Gazette article dated August 17, 2014, Attorney David Moore, a lawyer for the city of Worcester, said, "State law makes it illegal to stamp any paper or other article with a representation of a city seal with the intent of trying to give such a paper or article an official character it does not possess. Violations of that law carry a $50 fine." But Attorney Moore said, "The law only addresses the authentication of documents and does not address the use of variations of the city seal for commercial or other non-city reasons." Quote, "One would think that the use of a likeness of a city's seal would be prohibited under federal trademark law," he said. However, federal trademark law specifically prohibits the registration for trademark protection of any mark containing the flag or coat of arms or other insignia of the United States or of any state or city. Federal law does not allow you to do that. In another Telegram article dated September 27, 2015, the Telegram itself ran a version of the city's seal on its masthead without official permission for a time in the 1990s until it was advised of the possible infringement. Although it printed hundreds of thousands of papers with the seal, it paid no fine. So to paraphrase William Shakespeare for the literate among us, Ms. Gabry, methinks thou protesteth too much.
Thank you, Mr. Rafferty.
Your opinion is full of sound and fury.
Mr. Rafferty, please address your comments to me.
Madam Chairwoman.
Mr. Rafferty, please address your comments to me, or you will be removed.
I'm sorry. Ms. Gabry, methinks thou protesteth too much. Your opinion is full of sound and fury, signifying nothing.
And we have Mr. Robidoux, who, I'm sorry, it looks like a rebuttal. Is that what you signed up for, Mr.?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mike Robidoux, 81 Bancroft Street. I got wind of this earlier this week that Ellen Gabry was going to come before you, the day before the election. How nice. But besides that, Wayne Page is on a lot of boards. I think he's also done a lot for the veterans of the town of Auburn. But what I'm saying is...
Mr. Robidoux, please stick to the subject.
I am, I mean, I am speaking to the subject.
This board has been cognizant of the issue and been very sensitive.
I am speaking. Why are you interrupting?
I am interrupting you because I'm the chairman...
I'm going to get to the reason why.
I am the chairman of the board, and I am going to finish...
And hopefully tomorrow's the last day.
Thank you.
Thank God for the town of Auburn.
Have him removed.
But anyways, the seal, Wayne Page is a Marine.
Mr. Robidoux, if you cannot...
Wayne Page is a Marine, a Marine, a Marine.
We're not talking politics.
A Marine, former Marine, and you guys are disgusting.
We're not talking...
You want to be ashamed of yourself, Marine.
Thank you.
I can't believe, and why would you call her, her integrity worse? She's a liar. She tried to have me arrested.
We are in recess.
I'd like to call this meeting back to order, and I'm just going to go back to a couple of comments that were made, and I will ask the Acting Town Manager if he has anything to add. It's my understanding that this complaint came in due to the sensitive timing of the issue, due to the fact that this board was not going to get involved in a political discussion on this. The issue was referred to Town Council, and Town Council handled it appropriately. Mr. Kasnovich, do you have anything to add to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All I can say is that on Friday, four written complaints came into the office, into the town clerk's office. I had a discussion with the town clerk because she was, with the upcoming election, she is on the ballot, and she didn't want to interfere with the outcome of any ruling that may have been made by Town Council. So I think it was in the town's best interest to refer the matter to Town Council, at which time, it's my understanding, Mr. Henigan called Mr. Page to inform him of those complaints and to tell him that, basically, to cease and desist using the town seal going forward for any future mailings.
Thank you. Moving on with our agenda, we have public hearings and presentations. We have a hearing on a petition for a joint poll location at Southbridge Court for 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted, the hearing is open. Is there anyone here for the hearing? If you could please come up and join us. You can come right up and sit right up at the table here, please.
Okay.
So we have a petition and a location map for permission to locate polls, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the public way at Southbridge Court. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Kimberly Tavoli-Mola, and I am here from National Grid for this petition. They want to install two poles on Holstrom Court to service the house that is at 13 Holstrom Court. Originally, they thought that they could access the poles in the back of the post office, and they couldn't. So now it is necessary to put these two poles in to feed them electricity.
Excuse me. Are there any questions? Mr. Holstrom.
To the chair, there's no way you can access any other electrical services from even number of Holstrom Court? So you have to put down two separate poles and a whole new separate line down that line, down that street?
We do, because you can only go 150 feet between each of the poles with the cable because of the weight.
So you can't take, say, from 14 or 12 or 14 Holstrom Court and run a line across to a pole near the house? You have to put in two brand-new ones to feed the home?
We cannot have an aerial trespass against anybody's property without an easement, and we weren't granted easements.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Are there any abutters here? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the hearing?
No move. Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted, the hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding the application?
I'll make a motion that we approve the petition for the joint poll location.
Thank you.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
We have no communications under Board of Selectmen general items. We have gift acceptance in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. The town of Auburn, from the Auburn Chamber of Commerce, and the amount of $500 for the Summer Concert Series. Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we accept the gift with gratitude and that a letter be prepared for the chair's signature as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? The second item we have is Webster First Federal Credit Union and the amount of $500, also for the summer concert sponsor. Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we accept with gratitude and that a letter be prepared for the chair's signature.
Second.
Is there any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thank you. The next item we have is a request for a road status change to a public road on Bylin Drive. In close, you have a petition from some residents on Bylin Drive. The recommendation would be to refer this to our DPW director for a report. Are there any comments?
I'd make a motion we refer to Mr. Coyle for his report and recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thank you. The next item we have under Proclamations and Recognizations is a request for Girl Scout Silver Awards. In your packet, we have some local Girl Scouts, three of them, who are receiving their Gold Scout, excuse me, Gold Scout Silver Award, which is the highest award a girl can attain in grade six through eight, per our policy. I think that we could send them a letter of congratulations, but it's up to the board.
I will make a motion to do so.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you. So the next item is to schedule a meeting for reorganization. As it's been stated tonight, that there is an election. We will have board members re-elected or elected to the board. According to our chatter, we need to reorganize within seven days. Our next meeting is in two weeks, so we need to schedule a meeting in the next seven days. Well, seven days after tomorrow. We could do Monday, I don't have a calendar, Monday, the 21st. It would be strictly to reorganize. There would be no other business.
I'll make that motion.
At 7:00 PM?
Sounds good.
And I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Is everyone available on Monday, the 21st? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? The next item we have is to continue the process of a vote by town meeting to petition the General Court for enactment of special legislation regarding action that was taken at town meeting. This entire thing does need to, the entire piece does need to be read into the record. Does anyone want to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make it. And we have to include...
Yes. The board votes to petition.
Okay. All right. The board votes to petition the General Court of the enactment of special legislation as follows: "To authorize relocation of Faith Avenue and conveyance of remnant parcels of real property remaining therefrom, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Board of Selectmen approves amendments thereto before enactment by the General Court, which amendments shall be within the public purposes of said petition or act, to read as follows: An act authorizing the town of Auburn to relocate Faith Avenue and convey remnant parcels of real property, be it enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Court assembled, and by the authority of the same as follows. Under Section 1, notwithstanding Section 17 through Section 24 of Chapter 82 of the general laws and any other general or special law to the contrary, the Board of Selectmen for the town of Auburn may, by vote, except as a new townway, a subdivision roadway constructed on property located at Faith Avenue and Washington Street in the town of Auburn, as shown on plan titled Relocation of Faith Avenue in Auburn, Massachusetts, prepared by Waterman Designs Associates dated October 31, 2017. A new subdivision roadway to be constructed at its own expense by Masad Family LLC in accordance with decision issued from the Auburn Planning Board dated November 7, 2017, as may be amended from time to time by said board, and to discontinue as a townway the portion of Faith Avenue shown on said plan as portion of Faith Avenue to be discontinued. Under Section 2, notwithstanding the requirements of Chapter 30B and Chapter 40 of the general laws and any other general or special law to the contrary, the town of Auburn shall, by its town manager and for consideration of $1, an acceptance of the new relocated townway described in Section 1 of this act, convey to Masad Family LLC or its designated any remnant parcels of real property owned by the town of Auburn remaining after discontinuance of the portion of Faith Avenue. And under Section 3, this act shall take effect upon its passage. B, swimming pool...
Nope, that's, you're done. Is there a second on that?
Thank you.
I'll second.
Is there a discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted?
I'm opposed.
I'm sorry, it's four to one with Mr. Carpenter opposed, Sharon. The next item we have is a swimming pool feasibility study update. Mr. Kasnovich.
Madam Chair, members of the board, there was a meeting held on May 7, our first public hearing where about 20 residents attended. A lot of information was shared at that meeting. And the town still continues to seek public opinion through an online survey that can be accessed through the town's website. There is a banner in red for a questionnaire on the swimming pool feasibility. And additionally, a next hearing will be held at Auburn High School in the presentation room on June 20.
And what time was had, I'm sorry?
I believe 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, same as the last one. Okay. Thank you. Do you have anything else on that?
That's it, Madam Chair.
And do you have any other, any other items you wanted to bring before us tonight?
No, I do not.
Okay. Moving on to table items, we still have our four tabled items. I think it would be appropriate to just hold these until reorganization of the board.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Sure.
Yes, the draft code of conduct, the revision of recognition policy, proclamation policy, and new recommendations for the subcommittee's consideration, yes, those are policies in place, but we have one under D, under proposed plastic bag ban. Now, this has been an ongoing tabled item, and we have an open hearing on it. So it continues to be open, and I think unless we've had any information come forward, I think possibly to close it until we get, until such time that we have the information put together and find out where we're going to go with this proposed bag, proposed plastic bag ban. As in the town meeting, the annual town meeting, it was voted to postpone the bylaws indefinitely, and I think right now with, there's no other discussion coming forward, I believe, that now would be a good time to close that hearing until such time that more information comes forward. And I would make that motion to close that hearing.
Is there a second?
Not a second, but I'd like to make a comment.
Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second if a discussion...
Because he's made a motion. Okay. Go ahead.
I'm not sure what Mr. Holstrom's referring to with motions being postponed indefinitely. Regarding the plastic bag ban, there were some zoning bylaw amendments, but a plastic bag ban bylaw would be a general bylaw amendment. I'd be okay with scheduling another public hearing and a vote, potential vote, tonight, but my recommendation would be to wait until after the reorganization.
So, and I don't know if you have this information tonight. I know at our last meeting, we had mentioned that it was still open for public comment. Do you know if any additional comments were sent in?
I don't know if there was any recent information that came to the office. I apologize. If I knew this matter was going to be discussed tonight, I would have got an update on that. I'd be happy to do so after tonight's meeting, and we can report back to the board at your next meeting.
So I would, I would agree that we should at least put it, you know, rather than just on tabled items, put it on the agenda for public input and a vote of the Board of Selectmen. I think we need to take a position on this, so I'd rather see it continued on here and after the reorganization, if the board so chooses to put it on to take action. Is there any other discussion? So the motion, go ahead, Mr. Rafferty.
So I just, I, point of clarification, so are we voting to just take it off the tabled items and then, then the motion? After the reorganization, we'll put it on as an agenda item?
So, so the, so Mr. Holstrom has made a motion to close the hearing. So there would be no further action on it. It would just be to close the hearing, whether we took action tonight or not. We would take, closing the hearing, we would take no further public input. So the motion is to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So we'll schedule one more public hearing. Under Board of Selectmen items, we have no items signed up. Does anyone have anything? Is there any additional public?
I guess...
I'm sorry, Mr. Holstrom.
Yeah, just, now's a great opportunity. Tomorrow is Election Day, May 15, Tuesday. Polls will be open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Great time to get out there, support your candidate, support the town, and let people know that you're interested in what we do. May 15, Tuesday, tomorrow, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, the polls are open, Auburn High School. Please come out and vote.
Under public comment?
Yes, I would like to make a part comment of the letter that I have, I mean, the conversation that I have with Mr. Henigan because it, the Acting Town Manager had talked about. You indicated to me in our telephone conversation today that you were not aware that the use of the town seal in the manner was possibly, possibly in violation of law, and that you believed that as a resident of the town of Auburn, you had the right to put the town, the town of Auburn seal on the advertisement as a point of pride. I recommend to you that, given the language of the statue, you consider ceasing to use the town seal in your future mail-in seeing handouts, if any. You indicated, which is me, that you would do not use, that I will not, to make sure that the use of the town seal was discontinued and that I would not happen again. I'm sorry, I'm kind of overgoing a couple of things because I'm very upset at the way that town has handled this issue and, members of the board. I believe this represents the sum of our substance of our conversation. I believe this represents the sum of our substance of our conversation.
Mr. Page, point of order.
Please.
Excuse me, Mr. Page. Just let me speak for a moment. Members of this board had no, took no action on this item. I just want to clarify that. And we have been respectful. For weeks now, we've brought politics into this Board of Selectmen meeting. This meeting is for Board of Selectmen business. We've addressed this at the earlier public comment. I'm going to ask you to wrap this up. If you are upset with this, you can take any appropriate action that you deem necessary. But we intentionally turned it over, from what Mr. Kasnovich told me. It was intentionally turned over to Town Council so this would not become a political issue the day before an election. So I will ask you to please be careful with your comments, or I'll have to gavel you out of order.
Sure. Okay, well, the one thing is, is we did have a resident that had caused this to become a problem this evening by speaking earlier tonight. And I was going to speak anyway on the issue because I felt heartily that I did know wrong. I put down the money there because I support this town.
We're not...
I support the residents, and, like I said, I put in red, white, and blue the flag, and hopefully I won't get... I'm sorry, I'm not going to go on any further because I'm very upset.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Page.
Madam Chair, if I can speak before this goes, because I keep hearing the word "the Board of Selectmen did something," and the first time I've heard of this is actually tonight.
I'm saying the board took no action. It was referred to Town Council because it was a political matter.
So I don't want anybody to suggest that the Board of Selectmen as a whole or in part have made any actions, because this is the first time hearing of it, and I don't want anybody to misconstrue that the board in any way is interfering in an election. So I just want to get that off my chest, in addition to the fact that, you know, Mrs. Gabry has served our community with distinction, and I personally am offended that people are coming to a meeting to speak against her as a, now she's a private citizen, but she certainly deserves our respect, and I would appreciate it if, whatever influed conversations, that we speak appropriately and respectfully of each other.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. No, we're not, we're not, we're done.
I just wanted to say I did it both in the best way I could.
We're done. Thank you. We have the minutes of March 12 and March 19, 2018. Are there any omissions or corrections? Seeing none, the Chair will accept them as written. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The board has said...
Thank you. Good night.